All right, we're going to open the meeting for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee, April 30th. We'll stand for the [inaudible].
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with introduction of members.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
John Woosniak, Blackstone.
Eric Eisner, student representative.
I'm Jane Reggio.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone.
Dave Thompson, Assistant Superintendent.
Alan Himmelberger, Superintendent.
And Erin Vinoco, Millville. And public forum, looks like we're waiting for the next one. Report of our student rep.
All right, so it's just me tonight. Got a lot to cover, but I'll try and make it quick for you guys. We haven't been here in a while, so. Report cards came out just before vacation. One of the new things for next year is, well, we started our class selections already, and we're actually implementing a lot of new AP classes in the high school. I know just a few off the top of my head, AP physics, AP statistics, and a lot of kids are really excited about that. We actually had, I'm not sure what organization the man was from, but it was either College Board or something along those lines, come in and talked to us a few days ago about the importance of AP classes in the college world and just in general. So he talked to the sophomores and the juniors, and he kind of got us motivated to step up, challenge ourselves, and take more AP classes in the higher level classes in general. Then also before vacation, we had the career fair. This was really cool. There were nurses, lawyers, members of the Army. It gave the sophomores and juniors a chance to walk around, see what was there, kind of test out the waters, visit the options, because in just a few short years, we're going to have to make decisions about what we want to do when we're older and things like that. To go even further back, the junior class, or the majority of the junior class, attended the college fair in Boston. It was at one of the expo centers, and we basically got to walk through all the different booths, and you could talk to the college representatives there. They could scan your little barcode, and you get information from them now. So it was really nice to start that process of looking at colleges if you haven't yet. And then the senior class has been pretty active with their fundraising. They had a magic show with four magicians. It was, it was pretty cool to go and see that a lot of the, majority of the audience was younger kids, so it was nice to get that community feel, definitely in the high school, but high schoolers were still there, too. And then prom was actually over vacation, this Thursday over vacation, it was at the roads on the Patuxet, I believe it's called. There were 200 people in attendance overall, and that's including staff. The place was gorgeous, everybody looked great, and it was a great night overall, no problems. And then just to update with student council, I'm not sure if I commented on this in the last meeting, but we had our annual state conference in Hyannis. That was, we ended up with a silver council award. We didn't get the gold, we missed it by one point, but we're really shooting for that next year. And then all of April has been Autism Awareness Month. We've sold lollipops at all lunches for a dollar, they're blue lollipops for the, that's the color for autism is blue. We've also had a penny war and a blew out, and all the proceeds from that are going towards autism awareness. And then we actually just had our regional spring conference for student council. I actually ran for the president of our region, and I actually won that, so we had everybody-
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Everybody was campaigning for me and speeches and everything, and it was really fun, a lot of great candidates there. And then upcoming this weekend actually is a Cory Crusaders Walk in 5K. Still time to register if you guys didn't yet. I know the National Honor Society, as well as the student councils are running teams. And also the same day, it's this Sunday, is a Walk for Hunger in Boston, which the student council and the, and National Honor Society also do. So we'll hop on a train and go into Boston. We usually split it up half and half, and that's just to support ending hunger. And then sports finally are in full swing. Baseball had a tournament over vacation, and I believe they completely won the tournament. They had MVPs named, and they had one kid from the team, Justin Stone, was named overall tournament MVP, so that's pretty exciting. And that is all I have for tonight.
You're the first person ever elected to that position-
I believe I am.
Yeah, I think so, too. Congratulations.
I know somebody ran a few years ago for something a little bit different, but I think I'm the first elected, so.
Great. Congratulations.
Did one year?
Yep, one year. Mm-hmm.
And what extra responsibilities does it give you?
So I'm the regional president, so I have to plan two conferences, but it also puts me on the state board, because there's four regions that make up state for student councils. So I also have to plan the, help plan the big annual conferences and things like that, so. Excited.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And consent agenda A, actually, I think all we have are the warrants, right? We don't have, so are there any?
This is one field trip.
Oh, is there one field trip?
Yep. Yep. And I made energy.
No usage. Do you need it?
So we don't have minutes, so we need to take the minutes out.
So I make a motion to approve consent agenda A minus the minutes from April 9th, 2015.
I'll second.
Motion made by Wendy, seconded by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Unanimous for ayes. And on to our school committee. We have a visitor here. Discussion and approval of bond sale for our roof projects. So if you'd like to introduce yourself and-
I'm Lynn Foster, Community and Fiscal Advisory Services. I am the financial advisor to the school district. As you know, we went up to bond the four roof projects last week. I moved back it up a little from there. In order to put the bonds off the market, we needed the bond rating to be four. And the bond ratings came out very favorable to the district, which was over 90. That was for hurdle, so to speak, to get over on that. And again, last week we sold the bonds, we sold 2.9 million for the four roof projects. We also had a smaller note issue that accompanied that same day, and we carved out a piece of bonding because the MSBA audit has not been completed yet. And so there's still some grant money to come in, and the last thing we wanted to do was bond, you know, the non-district share, because then you own it. So the thought is, is when this note comes due, and we have maturity in November, that the MSBA audits for all four projects will have been signed off on, and we'll know the final grant money that's coming in, and either pays off the note or it reduces it significantly. So we went out last week, we got three bids, which is fairly, the average amount of bids for this. It's a small issue in the underwriting world, not to, I mean, not, it's, you know, it's big, but to the, to the underwriters, it's, it's a small issue. So that's what we usually see, is about three underwriting firms bid on this size bonds. Robert Baird was the low bid, and they came in at an overall true interest cost at a 223. And the, the district did extremely well in the market. It came in less coupons than what we had budgeted for when we did our analysis, and when the district went out and spoke to the member towns. We were very happy with the bids. So I'm here tonight, I have a lot of paperwork that we need to go through, but before we can proceed, there is a vote that the school committee does have to take. And Alan, do they have those in their packets?
Yeah, I have the copy.
How much was the smaller note?
The smaller note was 946,008.57.
It's a copy of the-
And that's for all four projects.
But what is the motion?
So, let's go.
Okay.
So shall I read?
You can read if you want, and it's totally up to the district. You can go through and abbreviate it as you go, or unless the, the committee wants to go and read the whole vote, coupon maturity by maturity, I'll leave that up to the school committee. Or I can read the vote and abbreviate them for you.
None of us have seen it, so.
Do you want to take some time to read through it?
Do we have enough copies for you?
Um, I can get some more. Let me get this.
I already signed mine, so if you want to pass that over to them.
Does anybody have any questions while we're, before we're done?
Sure.
Sorry.
My error.
What?
My error.
Is there, could you go over the bond ratings, though? If we're at, we say we're at double A minus.
Double A minus.
Yep. And what, what's, what's next after that?
What's the scale look like? I'll start at the top, and I'll use the Standard and Poor's scale. Moody's is similar, but they use different little designations, but obviously relatively the same. The triple A is, is the highest rating. And then you get to the double A, and there's, there's three subsections in that. There's a double A plus, the straight double A, the double A minus. Then you get into A, same thing, A plus, A, A minus. Then you get into B double A, and you can go all the way down to C minus, junk status, but.
I'm just curious as to how the bond rating affects our, the, the request for the funding. How does it affect it, how does it impact?
It impacts it significantly, because that's what the underwriters are using to judge-
Like your credit score, right?
Yeah, it's like your credit score. It's like, you know, the safety of, of, of the bonds, and obviously, the higher your credit rating is, is the lower interest cost, you know, no risk. Everything has to, you know, be a risk assessed. You'll see, you know, usually if you're in an A category, the single A category, particularly in today's market, you'll see issues selling with insurance, where the underwriter purchases insurance. Again, it's an added cost to their bid, so your coupon rates are, are higher.
So what are we, what are we looking at for a double A negative?
You have, you've, you've got it. We've already been out to bid, and your average true interest cost for the 15 years of the bonds was a 223. Interest, overall interest cost. So you've got some coupons, for instance, that go, run upfront 2%, there's a couple at 2.5, and, and one at 3% for the last maturity.
Do you know why our, I'm just curious if you can answer why our rating was double A negative?
Double A minus, not, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, it is. Yes. There is a negative in the rating, so it, that, what, what was a factors in that with the Standard and Poor's? When they rate the district, okay, they really look, obviously, your revenue, as you all know, is derived from the member towns. In Blackstone's case, they're double A plus. In Millville's case, they don't carry a rating. They just don't, they don't have bond ratings, they don't have any bonds. I mean, as simple as that. But they look at the demographics, they look at the economy, the MSA area that you're, that you're established in, they look at reserves, and they felt that the double A minus came out because of the fact that, you know, there's not a lot, Millville doesn't have a lot of economic wealth to lend to the, the credit, so they, they were comfortable at the double A minus. Which is not, I mean, it's, it's a good quality rating.
No, I, I know I-
It's not a, it's not a, it's not some-
Double A plus would have been a lot better.
Triple A would be perfect. Yeah.
So we're, as far as our vote, do we need to vote just on the 2.9, or are we?
Yes, you just need to vote on the 2.9, and the, I don't think bond council put in the notes. No, just what's here. Yep.
Through the chair, I would, I'll just read and capsulize it, and certainly, Mrs. Foster, if I make a mistake, you'll let me know, but I'm just going to abbreviate it and read this for folks at home. This is a vote of the regional school district, school committee. I, the secretary, district secretary for the regional school district, the committee of Blackstone Millville Regional School District, certify at the meeting of the committee held on April 30th, 2015, of which meeting all members of the committee were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon official record of the committee in my custody. Voted that we hereby determine in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 70B, that the amount of the cost of the Millville Elementary School Roof Project authorized by a vote of the committee passed on January 9th of 2014, not being paid by the school facilities grant, is $660,960. And we hereby approve the issuance of notes and bonds in such amount under said Mass General Law Chapter 70B. Further voted, we hereby determine in accordance with Mass General Law 70B, that the amount of the cost of the school roof projects authorized by a vote of the committee passed on January 17th, 2013, not being paid by the school facilities grant, is $1,793,153 in connection with the high school roof project, $1,876,184 in connection with the JFK roof project, and $1,138,873 in connection with the Maloney Elementary Roof Project. And we hereby approve the issuance of notes and bonds in such amounts. Further voted, the sale of 2.9, $2,936,601 of general obligation school bonds of the district dated May 1st, 2015, to the Robert W. Baird and Company Incorporated, at the price of $2,990,815.16, and accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on May 1st of the years, and in the principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. And then below that, we have the years from 2016 to 2030, with the following amounts, and you see there the interest rates. And, and I'm not sure, Lynn, if you want to explain the reason why you'll see 2024 and 25 together?
Yes.
Along with 26 and 2027 cumulative, and then 2028 through 2030 in the cumulative amount.
That's what we, we call term bonds. We offer that to the underwriter, where if they have a purchaser, and it's strictly transparent to the district, it's really on, on the buy side, that they can combine maturities in order to be able to sell a larger lot. So that's what they call, they term the issue up. In the districts, it doesn't change what your debt service schedule looks like, everything look, it, it, you, what you're looking at, you see no term bonds, but they, we give the underwriter an option, and it's one more selling point, if you will, in an issue, when they can term those up and have a lot, larger lot size to sell to their retail or institutional investors.
So that would be the explanation on those years cumulative. It goes on to say, further voted, that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated April 14th, 2015, and a final official statement dated April 21st, 2015, each in such form as may be approved by the district treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted, the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of the district upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. Further voted, the district treasurer and the chair of the committee be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the district, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted, that we authorize and direct the district treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the district treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds. Further voted, the chair of the committee, the district secretary, and the district treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions, and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing, foregoing votes.
And that's the end of the vote. Alan, let me just have the secretary sign off.
We need someone to move that.
Who moved, is red?
Thank you. Any seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Moved by Bill and seconded by Jane. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And are there any ayes? So the ayes have it unanimous? And do you need anything else?
I just need the seal and the secretary's signature.
And for our viewers at home.
But we don't have the seal.
Secretary's not here.
She'll be here. Oh, she's on her- I'll sit with her. I'll just wait.
So can this get put up into the packet, too, as well, online?
Yep.
And are there any other questions or discussion about that?
No. Yeah, could you?
Next on the agenda is discussion with town boards.
I think we're going to, we had a meeting with Millville FinCom the other night, Monday, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, sorry. It actually ended up being just a general discussion, because they do not have a quorum. That was followed by, our, our meeting with them was followed by a joint meeting of FinComs last week in Blackstone, that I think was just viewed by a few of us on video, and we were not there, but do you want to share what we were handed from Millville last night?
Sure, and just to be clear, I, I've had conversations with both the finance committee chairs, Mr. Cravelo in Millville and Mr. Muller in Blackstone, and the, the amounts of additional contribution that the finance committees will recommend to the boards of selectmen and to town meeting, for Millville is 115,000, and for Blackstone, 285,000. So that combines to give us $400,000 of additional contribution, which is gratefully accepted. The only issue, obviously, is that we put forth, the school committee voted to certify a budget that required $975,000 of additional contribution. So that leaves us with a gap of $575,000.
How did they come up with the 285?
Yeah, does the 118, 115 and 285, that doesn't even-
I believe it's the same ratio of the point, 288 and the .712.
Sure doesn't seem it.
If it's not, then we will obviously have to have further conversation.
And did they say where that money was coming from?
I have not been informed of that as of yet.
Well, Millville basically said that that was what they had left from, after their free ca, after their budget, and taking it from their free cash and what, the, the numbers they were working with. I did reach out to him today to ask a few other questions, you know, basically if they were moving money into stabilization, I, I did not get an answer, so it's not something we got to last night, because they didn't have their quorum, we didn't see what their lines were.
Because if you minus what we gave back-
I was just going to say that.
I know.
How much did we, can we-
Forty-eight, 116.
Forty-eight and 116, so 48 Millville, 116 Blackstone.
So we're only getting about 70,000.
It is.
So that's where we are as, in what we know as of today, and certainly, there is work to be done, and that 575,000 represents a challenge. Some of that monies, we have been trying to hold on to our FY15, current budget money, that's unencumbered and, and has not been spent, and so that was the plan all along, to be able to reduce, if we had monies left over, and we should have some, it will be remaining to be seen what that exact number will be, but that will help to offset some of that 575. We did have a, a few challenges that, that all municipalities and regions had with the snow, and with the roads, and with, you know, additional utility costs that were way over what was budgeted. So it is a, and continues to be, a lot of moving parts as we, as we come down the last couple of months of the fiscal year, and as we head into town meetings. But that is the information that I have as it stands as of today.
Any questions?
Well, I guess I have a question of how we proceed going into those town meetings, because plain fact of matter is, you know, if, in Millville, I can't speak for Blackstone, I only went to their town meeting once, but in Millville, you have to find money from somewhere within the budget to make it any amendment. And is there any to take from?
Their public hearing is-
Next week?
Next Wednesday?
I believe.
Next Wednesday?
No.
Yep.
Hold on. It's the Wednesday before their, their town meeting, which is the 11th, so it is-
But everything's already gone to warrant, though. No, or it will go that night?
I believe it goes that night. I, it's, so May 6th is their-
Is their public hearing.
Is their public hearing. But I believe Blackstone is the same way. We have to know where we'd want to move it from to be able to-
Make an amendment. Yeah, anyone can make an amendment on the town meeting floor.
But you have to say where.
You have to say where you want it to come from, like we did last year. And, you know, I really don't want to go through what we did last year. However, we already cut $750,000 out of the budget, and we cut $750,000 last year, and for me, I appreciate the effort that they're making this year in finding additional contribution. Just not enough. And, and, and again, I think we have to kind of continue the dialogue about moving forward. You know, we can't do a minimum contribution, I'll get to the day on the hill later, but it's, it's, the Chapter 70 funding right now is so unfair and inequitable. The whole point of it in 1993 was to make it more fair, and by not doing something over the last 20 years, it is so unfair right now and inequitable, because, for the simple fact that it goes onto the burden of the towns. The Fed and the state come up short, and, and, and that's not fair either. I don't, I don't, but it's, we still have a school district to run, and, you know, I don't want to hear every year, we're half the budget, we're half, we were half the budget 30 years ago, we'll be half the budget next year, and we'll be half the budget two years from now, and 10 years from now. We just have to kind of change the mindset, that's all. And I don't know how to proceed forward. Five hundred, five, $575,000 in the negative on top of the 750, it's 1.2 million that we're cutting.
Based on need?
Based on need.
Based on the needs of the district.
Correct.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
And the needs of the children don't change. They really don't.
They become more.
I mean, they become more. They become greater, and, you know, I know in one of the meetings, I heard that, you know, they were looking for a three-year plan. I don't know how we can have a three-year plan when we're just barely making it through.
We're skating by.
We're skating by.
And I think we can, I mean, I think we can have a three-year plan. I, I think we should always have, have had, we haven't in the past, but we start from where we are, and we can have a three-year, and we can have a five-year, and we can have a 10-year, and we should. But the plain fact of matter is, the gentleman who said that also said, "We weren't clear in what this money was going to and what we needed," and we were very clear. I mean, very specifically, you know, said programs that it was going to, and that's the first time, you know, that I know that I've asked specifically for, that we need to be very clear, that, you know, if you're saying no to this, you are saying no to social emotional classroom, you are saying no to AP, and we've already heard, colleges are telling students, AP classes are critical. I mean, I see it every single- I mean, I see it every single day in my field. I mean, they are critical and so that's what we're losing. So I don't know, I think if we gave three-year plans and five-year plans and 10-year plans and 20-year plans, it still wouldn't be enough because I don't think the majority of people, and myself included, really understand all these numbers that were thrown in front of them. And I don't know how you educate a community in terms of the, this scale of numbers. I just...
Well, I think, I think, if I may, I think you have a great point, but I think your focus is all, always being on the defensive of saying, why are we, what are you requesting this for? I can't make heads or tails of this and I've been sitting there reading it and I've looked out and reached out. What I think is important that we provide them is not so much what this, because a three-year plan, what difference does it make? Every year, you're begging, borrowing, clawing to get the present budget numbers to work. What you, I think you need to make the folks understand is, let's go back. I know last meeting, we talked about, well, let's not dwell on the fact, no, we need to go back and make them understand that when you don't properly fund the program, sooner or later, somebody's going to have to pay the bill. I mean, you don't just ignore, you know, painting the house and then complain because the clapboards are starting to rot out because you didn't do what you're supposed to do three years ago. And that's what's happened. We thought we were getting a bargain. Well, you get what you paid for. So the years we had no increases in funding, the years we didn't invest in our educational program for the kids in the community, now we're here to say, now we're all playing catch-up. And then, and then we have to face the pointed question of, well, what do you need all this money for? Well, we need the money because back way, back when, you didn't give us the money. So now what we're doing is, the Band-Aids have all sprouted leaks and the technology has advanced well beyond what we anticipated before and now we're working at light speed with a budget that is inadequate. The problem you face is that have, people have this envisioned, this concept, this idea, that somehow you're asking them to fund a Porsche. And if you don't give them the results, they feel like they're just driving away in a used Chevy. So I think what you have to make them understand is, is that, and Mr. Superintendent, I really would turn to you because you know from both educationally and based upon your experience and your dealings with the financial components of education, how it is that the failure to fund five years ago at zero levels of increases is now coming home to roost so that we can be prepared to address the general town meeting to explain why certain allocations are being made in certain areas and not in others. The AP classes, you know, I have less concern, quite frankly, about the AP classes than I do cutting out a science class or a teacher or more of the more fundamental things that are going to get them to the point where, when they get to college, they don't have to take a mathematics class just to get caught up with the people that are starting their freshman years. I mean, I want them to walk in and say, you know, I mean, I'm a product of local edu, I went to Valley Tech. And I know that when we had, you know, a fairly decent quality, but when we were walking in, I was amazed that the English, level of English skills, science and mathematics skills of my colleagues in the freshman year that had to have advanced train, they had to start at fundamental mathematics, fundamental English, almost doing junior and senior high school math, doing junior and senior high school English and mathematics, just to get caught up so they could take the freshman college. I don't, I want our kids to go out there and say, you know what, we're ready. AP, I've got my own opinion about AP because I truly believe no matter what somebody comes up and tells you from a college, the bottom line is, when you have 15,000 applications, you look at one thing and one thing, you look at numbers, you look at SAT scores and you look at GPAs. And, and yeah, then when it comes down to it and you got the same GPAs and you got the same SAT, then you start looking at things like AP, extracurricular. But some of these schools, I mean, they're looking for the fundamentals and if you don't make it in your freshman year, your funding goes bye-bye as a student. So I want them to succeed in college, I want them to succeed in any kind of vocational program. So I think the people of Blackstone and Millville need to know that this is an investment. It's just as important investing in the water supply and any of the other infrastructure of their community is to invest in their, their educational system, you know, invest in the kids. That's what needs to happen. But I think, Mr. Superintendent, I think they need to understand, I don't think we can ignore the fact that we zero-funded for those years. Because I think right now, as I, my thoughts on it and looking back at it and kind of, is that we've been hit with all these unfunded mandates first, we've been hit with an advancement of technology and that we haven't kept up with. And now we're trying to play catch-up and those zero-funding years really just, you know, made us run in, you know, with flypaper.
And we've said that narrative, John, over the last five years about minimum contribution. We have to go beyond that. But you're right, the, I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, and I'm in education, we track that now about how many remedial classes that freshman is taking in college. That's the number they're tracking. They're also tracking who's still there that second year. Those are really important, those are really important figures. And, you know, there's a part of me that, you know, goes into town meeting and, you know, a third of them are going to be a no, no matter what. You know this.
Right.
It's that middle group that we can sway. And I think the narrative, the last couple of years has been we're scratching and crawling. And we've tried to make that point the last couple of years in terms of we've been level funded for years and all these other things are coming in. And what we do is we put more of our E and D in, you know, and that only makes it worse because then we don't, then we hit a wall after three years where we can put nothing in. So it is going to be interesting. It is going to be interesting.
The graph you gave us a few meetings ago is, I think, very informative on where we've been and lack of contributions. And I, I think we should use it as a tool on the town floors because there are new families. There are families that never have, maybe have been with us last year because we did get a good turnout of parents at the town meetings last year. But they need to see that, that seven and 10-year span.
They also need to know, I mean, we have to have a plan. Where's the, I think there's a lot of parents who would agree we need it. I mean, I think there are a lot of parents out there. Maybe they'll come to a meeting, maybe they won't, you know, I don't know, given the night. But they have to know where we can get it from. Because if we stand there just saying, we need it, we need it, we need it, and we don't have a plan for where we're going to ask it to come from, or we don't have support of the Finance Committees and the towns to even give us a clue where we might get it from, we're just talking.
But, and you say we're just talking and talking about a three-year plan. My first thought, and I already said this to the Superintendent, it would be a three-year dream because we're fighting every year just to make it. And we can say what our three-year plan is, but it is going to be a dream because I don't know how we would get there without their support. Another thing that was mentioned at that meeting that it hurt because you feel like we've tried to communicate so much and we've definitely made sure people have heard what we're doing here. Someone said we were trying to get well in one year. And, and obviously, we cut the 700,000 before we even certified a budget. That person mustn't know that. Get well in one year, we could never ask them for the money it would take us to get well. We could never do it. Our towns would never be able to afford that. We knew better, so we certified a lower number and they still feel like we're trying to get well in one year. We wouldn't be well. It would take a long time. We've been unwell for so long, it would, it would take a long time to be well.
And again, in the narrative, we say we're introduced in all these new positions. I would never say new position ever again. I would say we're trying to regroup the positions we've been cutting for the last five years. That's a different tone. You know, I have a great three-year plan. Commit to giving beyond the minimum. And if they need a number, we'll say, add 100,000 to each of that. I'll be laughed out of the hall. But that's, that's the type of plan we need. A commitment to give beyond the minimum. The state's not going to come up with it next year, I'm just telling you that right now. They might juggle some, but there's no new money. Right now, the 17 bills that the Education Committee is looking at, that is all based on charter school, school. Seventeen of them. In some way, shape, or form. Yeah, I'll say that.
So I guess we, we are down to the wire because our Millville Town Meeting is before our next meeting. So you're, I know we have two different sections on our, do you want to wait until we get to your report for the budget to talk about what the angles are working? Okay. So, moving on, reorganization of subcommittees. I know I sent this just asking people to look at them, see if there's anything in particular you're interested in. We can certainly...
Adjust.
Adjust that or, you know, we are, I think, just to go through it, budget, we're all part of. It's just on here because it's, but I think all eight of us are considered part of the budget subcommittee because we, we work together on that. The administrators present to all of us. Sick Bank, we do need two, two dedicated members that would be available usually for 15 minutes before a meeting or maybe on a non-meeting day to come in if there's ever a need. Facilities.
And the purpose for the Sick Bank, if somebody's requesting time out of the Sick Bank, they need approval from the School Committee. So we need two people to be on that committee.
They have people representing them.
And they have people that represent them to come in and ask for that amount of time off.
Do you want us just to?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be on that.
Okay.
Sick Bank?
Yeah.
So Jane and John. Facilities. Right now, we have NSDEC doing the assessments of the high school and the complex.
Finishing the high school, starting the complex.
So, I don't know how many, I guess anyone that wants to be on any of the subcommittees, the only one that's really limited is the Sick Bank, but...
I think the facilities is important, especially for the, you know, thinking of the complex and thinking of the money that we can put into the complex. I think we definitely need to really...
In the high school.
In the high school, right.
That's a biggie.
Right. But that money that's set aside, I think we really need to start spending that money. So I think we really need to push on that.
So are there any volunteers for facilities? We can go back.
Steve, Steve would want to do that. Steve and George, if they're not here.
There you go, they're not here.
I'll volunteer for that one. Those two are, they just happen to be back to back. But that's it.
So, Public Relations, Government Updates, this is what we're looking for. House Information and such.
I can do that.
Thank you. And Regional Agreement, actually, we already have Wendy, Jane, myself, Steve is on there too. And I think others have been assigned to some of the subcommittees, so, and Tara. Anyone else on there that...
Well, I think sparing the regional agreement.
Right.
And then being a part of it. I think right now, we're in a really good place with a lot of participation, so...
And then Policies is on all of us. We, that's our job is Policies and Budget, so...
Actually, I have a suggestion on that, actually. Because it's almost impossible if you look at all those. MASC has a service where they update it for us. And if there's specific ones that were just specific to us, then we could tackle those. Because the majority of them are just going by updated laws and whatnot. So they will do the whole thing. They'll put it online for us, on our website, the whole thing. So I think if you ask Glenn Kuchar or Mike Gilbert, they'll, they'll, I think that's easily done.
Okay.
It'll be over with. And then if they're just, if there are some specific ones like concussions or stuff that we would want to specifically do.
Or our birth date.
Yeah, right, right.
Those are personalized to us, so...
So they would take care of 90% of it and then we would take care of that other 10%.
Okay. That sounds like a plan.
I think that's something we definitely need to...
Yeah, it hasn't been done in years.
Yeah, our policy is very outdated.
Any other questions or discussions there?
Yeah, just on the subcommittees, how do you know when they meet, who else is on it, that kind of thing?
Most of the time, it's, well, facilities and there will be some activity just because of the reviews that are being done of our buildings now and we do know we have that money that needs to be spent, so...
When NSDEC comes back, there'll be...
Those reports will be sent to all of us, but, and you and Steve would work together on your time.
Steve's also on it?
Yes. So then usually what we look for here is just an update if there's anything, and a lot of times there isn't, on anything new, anything that's, you know, being worked on. But it is, it's separate. I know for a while, we were doing like a half an hour before our meeting, subcommittees could meet.
And last year, we met in the summertime.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it doesn't actually have to be, because there's no quorum on most of them. It's something that you can work on.
It's really just spearheading it, working with each of the buildings and working on a yearly plan of what's going to be coming up. Like, the high school's a big nut. The complex, you know, we never get around to spending the money that Blackstone puts aside for each year. And just having a plan for that, you know.
Yeah. I thought, my memory was that Blackstone didn't know where to allocate that, that money. You know, I always thought that Charlie Sawyer was always a great resource for that because he historically knows where the money came from, when it was first put in account, what it was intended for. And he's got a real firm grasp on the condition of that building, as you call it, the complex. I know doors and windows are like the first priority of that place.
And the other thing with that is, is when we had the...
But that roof's just temporary, by the way. I mean, that's not a permanent fix. That's...
The roof?
Yeah, that roof only has a limited lifespan, so...
At the complex?
Yeah. That was only put on there just to, you know, that wasn't a permanent...
I think it was.
No.
New one on there right now?
The new one on there right now, yeah.
I don't think that's, I think that's a permanent.
Well, it's permanent in that it's going to stay there for a while, but it's not permanent like a, you know, like a roof that you would do in your house and expect to last 20 years.
I think it is. We have a 20-year warranty on it.
You have a 20-year warranty, but I, my thought, my memory was, but I could, I mean, I could be wrong.
We can go back and check. But that not, we just voted on it.
I think the Green Bay Packers will win the Super Bowl, so I've been wrong, I've been wrong lots of times. You know, lots and lots of times.
But the other thing with MSBA, now that we've, we, really, this, we should think about this as a group and as a subcommittee, with our relationship with MSBA now, I mean, they have windows, doors, boiler programs, science lab programs. That's the kind of stuff we want to make an ongoing list of where we can get 40 cents on the dollar that we pay for.
Yep.
With the regional agreement, you've gotten my emails, I mean, they're just postings where next week's our first meeting. Sick Bank, it's only if somebody's sick and is requesting time.
And they'll contact us.
And they'll send out an email saying, can we please come before the meeting?
And that email that they'll be sending, where is that going?
To your BMRSD...
John Wozenyak at BMR.net.
Yeah. BMRSD. RSD.net.
Do I have a password?
We'll have, we'll have...
You have like this many waiting for you.
You probably have a lot.
You probably have about 15 in there. I've sent you four about the New England Patriots, so...
Really?
I'm wondering why there was no response.
Gradulatory and...
Yeah, we can get you squared away, John.
Okay.
Yeah.
You have yours, Karen?
Absolutely.
Call the office tomorrow, he'll get you your password.
All right.
Even though Bridget's...
And there is a request, just so you know, there is a request for the Sick Bank Committee to meet on, on May 14th or when the next meeting is scheduled.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
So May 14th for Sick Bank?
Or whenever the next meeting is scheduled.
Okay.
And what time would we meet?
Usually like 6:30, 6:45, I mean, it takes 10 minutes and...
Yeah, it's quick.
Yeah. And sometimes in the meeting room right over here or sometimes at a back table over there or...
Did you say six, like 6:15?
6:30, 6:30, 6:40.
6:45.
All right.
All right, moving on. Tentative School Committee meeting dates, everyone has a calendar that Bridget posted up for us with mirroring the dates that we have for this year. So really, this is just for your information, it's something we'll vote on next meeting.
Yeah.
And if we need to make any adjustments, just match it up with your schedules at home. The only date that was, the July date is, we have to close out our E and D. So that's why it's not, it's on a Monday. It has to be by the 15th, I think. It has to be by the 15th, I think. Oh, and we're moving it for the superintendent conference. So, actually, we need to move this July too, which we can talk about later. Any questions about that?
No.
When do we certify a budget? Is that early? Are we going early with that again?
If we mirror last year's, it would be February 25th.
Okay.
Which, next year will be at the right time, which will be a good time because we'll have the House One Budget. End of January, we'll have the ongoing conversations with everybody, November, December.
Then we would actually certify...
This will get put into that, that calendar that we've had with the listing, okay.
Same format.
And we actually don't certify until March 24th or 10th.
Typically, yeah.
That's the open hearing.
Okay.
Any other questions? You can let, you can let us know if there's something that needs to be changed.
So, we're going to want to vote on this at the next meeting?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to today. And moving on to report of super...
Do you want to do my quick thing for five?
Yeah, that would be great.
All right. So, we had the day on the Hill yesterday for Mass Association of School Committees. There was about 300 people there, school committees across the land, Massachusetts. There was about 90 students there, which was wonderful. Next year, I'm going to try to corral these two guys to come with me or meet me there or something because it's such a great, great experience. They talked about, you know, they had Senator, they had both Senator Chang Diaz and House co-chair for the Education Committee, Emily, yep, and several others. And, you know, and you'll hear the same song and dance about, you know, we know you guys work so hard with nothing and we're working hard. They talked a lot about the foundation budget review, which they have to complete and have recommendations by the end of June. And, you know, I'm not hopeful around what that's going to create. It'll, it'll be different, where they'll take into consideration special ed costs differently and, you know, rural regions of Western Mass that don't have broadband. They'll take those things into consideration in terms of the funding. But they've gotten a lot of feedback, they've gotten a lot of, they had a lot of five or six open meetings to have people come and, and they, they have heard everything that, everything that we're struggling with in terms of healthcare costs, special ed costs, regional transportation, so forth. So, they reassured us of those things. They did, they did, the House budget came out and restored some of the money. So, the kindergarten grant, I believe that's going to be back in for FY16. However, the point of that grant, they emphasized, was when they, when they created those grants, only 20% of the schools in the Commonwealth had full-day kindergarten. Now, 90% do, so they're nicely saying it served its purpose, start figuring out how to pay for it yourself. So, I'm thinking by FY17, we're going to have to figure out how to pay for that, if we, we'll get them back, I think, for FY16. But FY17, I think we'll have to look at what those costs are and continue to look at that. You know, they spent a lot of time on charter school, they spent a lot of time on, we're actually urged to send an email to Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito to all the good things that are going on at our school, so maybe they'll come visit ours. That was done sarcastically, I think, when they, when they did that, but hopefully people, we do do that. The, I spent some, I went to go look for our new Senator, Ryan Fatman, he was not there. It's funny, he was there last year when he was running for election. So, we made it very clear to his, his Chief of Staff in his office that, you know, we want to see him take the lead on some of these things. If not, we'll be looking for a new candidate come a couple of years from now. And they were scrambling around, taking our cards, we'll set up a scheduled meeting, he'll come out. He had been in Douglas the day before, the night before, 100 people were there in terms of, you know, they're cutting 20, 20 teachers. So, they're hearing us, but his, Fatman's stance is around, they want to give more money back to the town so then the towns can then give us. It's just a backdoor effect. I did, I did spend some time with Representative Fernandez out of Milford, who's putting, who's a great guy, who put forth a bill to really help out ELL funding. Milford's been getting hammered with that with the amount of non-English language learners. You know, our numbers have tripled, not tripled, sorry. Our numbers were like 22 a year ago, and now they're 56 of non, they don't, do not speak English showing up at our door. So, we went and thanked him for his efforts. We could not find Rep. Kyros. So, there was a lot, but there was a lot of camaraderie, a lot of schools that are in the same exact situation that we're in. I did get talking point cards that I put around to everybody in terms of the major issues. They're really looking at early childhood funding, a focus on there, regional transportation, obviously, the foundation budget review, so, you know...
Circuit breaker.
Circuit breaker, you know, fully funding circuit breaker. They think they'll do that. The Senate's going to start taking this up, I think, next week. I think they're going to start, the House has closed it out. They've restored some money. But, you know, we still, I think we should definitely continue to invite our rep and our state senator and email them. I'm going to give this to Jesse later, but I'm going to give out their email addresses and their, and their phone number around, just contacting them because if we're cutting 1.2 million, they need to hear about it, and they need to kind of take the lead on some of these things. So, overall, it was a really good, it was a good day. The lunch was wonderful, all the Vogues schools came and put a, that's when you, that's where I grabbed Fernandez because they're always coming down for a free lunch. So, we walked back to his office with him and, but, but it was a good day. Myself and Dr. Ha, he was there, and it was a good, it was a good day. And they really, I'm going to scan the, the material that they gave, that they focused on. I'll scan this in and email it out to the whole board. And that's it. You know, the reality is, I mean, the only thing I'll say is, the reality is that they're struggling finding new money. You know, even with the, when, the other emphasis that they did is that, you know, the House recommended, Governor Baker recommended an increase of $20 a kid, you know, which comes out to about $38,000 for us, okay? The House recommended $25. We had, our voice has to be saying, you have to recommend $100 per student. That's only 180 grand, you know, for us, but it's another 180 grand that we can put towards this deficit. So, we just have to kind of keep, keep sending, sending information into them.
Thank you. Any other, any questions for Bill?
No, but thank you for going.
We should all go next year, we'll get a bus. Take the FinComs with us and...
Take some kids.
Yeah.
The kids are invited.
Take the, take the van.
Yeah.
Are there a lot of superintendents in, in attendance?
Yeah, there's groups, there's groups of people that go. You know, there's usually two or three. I mean, it was nice to see a lot of students, it was like 90 students out of there.
Yeah, wow.
And there were lifetime school committee members there as well, you know, talking. And what you found was, a lot of the reps, you know, the Chair of the House Ways and Means, Spilka out of Ashland, she was a former school committee member, so she knows the fight. But they need to really collectively get together, and really, the point is around, there's really not a lot of new money. And it shouldn't fall on the property tax owner, it really has to come from, from somewhere else. That's my plug for the both towns.
Thank you. And then moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Vannaco. In your packet, you will see the enrollments for our elementary schools. We have three columns there, one would be the, where we were by grade, by class to start the year, where we are currently, and then with a projected as we go forward. And I know that that will be a key piece in the discussion of the, the regional agreement. But we certainly, right now, have, you know, our challenges around making sure that we continue to offer the very best that we can. But that's strictly for information for the committee as well as for next week's regional agreement meeting.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Are these the kindergarten enrollment, is that already submitted registration?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question.
The potential could be a little bit higher.
Yes. I didn't want to project, I really wanted to give the committee the slice as of today.
Right.
So, that's what has been, and the folks that have been enrolled typically. Sometimes it's as late as the, the week before school, we get a tremendous influx.
Usually it's around 10, right?
I can remember...
I would say at least a dozen, at least by August.
I can remember one year...
So, this is, this is actually good. If this is what's coming in, and last year, we had 96.
Yep.
The ones who are already here are, we're at 94, so that's, that's good information.
Yes.
So...
Plus the 12, though, right?
Plus the 12, that's why I'm saying right now, this number, it's not lower, so that's, I mean, it's only by two, so... That's a good sign.
And I think that's a good sign because people know that we have a pretty darn good program. I think that sometimes it's, it's hard to plan out because there's no algorithm that will predict what you have for student enrollment. I remember one year in Oxford, we had 30 6th graders enroll the week before school.
Wow.
30.
It happens.
One grade.
It happens.
How, how can that even be in the realm of mathematical, right?
It happened to my oldest in kindergarten.
Some of it's choice in, you know, some of it is move in, but there's, you never know, you never know. But there, there's typically, especially in the youngest grades, usually movement as we get there.
Right, and, and just to use Millville, Millville was at 63 in the pre-k program, and they're signed up at 65 right now, so that's...
But that's with a waitlist, though, right? We could do another class.
We could, yeah.
We could do another class. But we didn't, we didn't, you know, plug that in. I have a quick question. So, if we have to cut $575,000, what does that equate to here? And you have to do what? I was looking for a number. Does 575 equal five teachers, six teachers?
Well, $575,000, if you take a master's five, that's probably talking nine or 10 professional staff average salary.
Which would clearly...
Yeah.
Yeah. Affect these numbers.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
The class size numbers, I'm sorry.
You would easily move your class size from 20 and 22 to 25 and 27, easily.
There's not many 20, well, there's a couple 22s in here. I was surprised to see the teens, all the teens.
Yep. Yep. So, I wanted the committee to have that, and we'll continue to monitor that. And as we get closer to summer, and then as we go through, we'll, we'll update that to see how the numbers are continuing to project. Okay?
Yes.
And then the discussion of FY15 and FY16. Certainly, to Mr. Wozniak's point, you know, you look at the history, and I know some people don't want to look at history because it's ancient and we move forward, but if you don't learn from the past, sometimes those mistakes continue to crop up. And over the past nine years, five of those years, we have begun the year with less money in our general fund budget than the year before. That's a fact. Five of the nine, less money. Yes, those were challenging and very difficult years as we went through '08, '09, and '10 with the recession. However, and again, to John's point, you have to have the numbers set as early as possible. What we had to go through last year, I would not wish that upon anyone ever again. To have to go through the personnel issues that we had to go through just to protect the financial liability and stability of the district and indirectly the towns, to non-renew people and to lay off those kinds of numbers, and then really spend all summer when you should be planning, reflecting, strategizing, reorganizing. We spent it hiring, posting, interviewing to get back, and there's a tremendous cost associated with that. So, to have the number finalized, whatever it is, by the, the Blackston Town Meeting is very important, is very important as we go forward. The committee, I know, has, has asked in the past for a capital plan and for a three-year plan of revenue and expenditure projections. And I'm working on that, and we would have that for the committee, I'm going to promise by the end of July. And once the committee approves that, I would certainly share it with the finance committee so that we can have ongoing dialogue, not in March like it was this year, but in October and November, which is the perfect time to make sure that everybody understands. We have another Fall Town Meeting, we're going to have this much free cash or stabilization. We have raisin appropriate at the Fall Town Meetings as well. So, there are opportunities to, to affect the financial outlook of the towns and the district. The, the capital plan continues to grow. We know we have a modernization that we must do at JFK. We know we have a renovation that has to happen at the high school, both of those sooner than later. And again, as, as Mr. Chaplin mentioned, MSBA is a very good partner now, and we qualify for a pretty significant amount of reimbursement on those MSBA grants. But those are monies that we can quantify. When you replace flooring and exterior windows and doors, there's a payback for that. Looking for alternative sources of energies and, you know, Selectmen and, and town administrators have been very forthright and forthcoming about the opportunities to be able to do that with solar. And so, we are going to look at that as an option because Plymouth has five solar fields that generate a million and a half dollars of savings. Now, they have a lot of land, we know that, but there are ways that we can do it and, and there are, even though that, that game has changed dramatically in terms of credits and how solar responded and alternative forms of energy, it's certainly something that we need to look at and, and we will. The capital plan is also going to have to include the driveway here at the middle school, which is disintegrating...
As we speak.
Rapidly. I would have to check with Mr. Hartnett, but I believe there's only about $25,000 left in that building account. And to do that right is a, is a large capital expense, probably in the neighborhood of $200,000 to, to make this driveway safe. We know that we're going to have down the road...
I thought there was a drainage problem, I thought there was something going on with this.
There's definitely something going on because the water is eroding the road, the road very quickly.
Did we just miss the warranty on that, 10 years?
Well, I was told that, that, the, the company that did the work promptly went belly up after they did it. So, I don't know the history, but certainly I know what's being, what we're faced with now. So, that's going to be a capital project as, as ultimately some of the asphalt at Millville Elementary. I mean, that's just stuff that has to be done over time.
And can you add to your analysis or taking a look at it, not necessarily the paving or asphalt, but just the drop-offs and pickups situation we have now at the complex? Because that's, that's a safety nightmare. You've got people blocking off the entire streets on both sides.
They both, but Millville...
They're not having, there's no detail officer there or anything else. I don't know what, Millville, I'm assuming, I just don't drive down that road.
Yep.
She has a police officer.
If he's available.
Yep.
There's got to be some, we don't have one in Blackstone, JFK is a nightmare and it's causing all, the people are just parking in the middle of the road.
I have Bendabose, I heard.
Yep.
So, I think that there may be some way to look at that because I think it's a public safety issue. Yeah, it's a definite public safety issue, and I don't know, Millville has a detail officer?
He's not detailed.
When available.
About 90% of the time, yeah, when available, but he's, he's generally there.
Yeah, I don't think there's one, there's not one at JFK.
But he's actually not directing traffic, he's out of the car and visible, right?
Right.
Yeah, but he's, if people are holding up or, he's, he's...
Facilitates.
I think it's about time.
He's a very nice gentleman.
It has been brought up so many times, I really do think it's just time that we...
Have a plan.
We need a plan. The, both those elementary schools, you know, there are some that are so organized, and then there's us. And we, I think it's been asked for so many times, asked of the administrators, and, and parents have asked to help fix it, and it just, it needs to be done for, for the structure of both schools, I think.
Then, then we will look into it, and this is the right time of year to be doing that, so, okay. So, the capital plan and the three-year plan, the committee will have those from us by the end of July. And then the hope would be to take that once approved and, and have the conversations with town boards so that there is a longer view based on thoughtful analysis that will, will hopefully get us to where we are. The bottom line is that monies come from basically two pockets. from basically two pockets, to Jane's point, stabilization or free cash. So when you make the amendment, that's where they have to come from, typically. To Mr. Wozniak's point, at some point, we're going to have to catch up. And currently, with a four hundred thousand dollar additional contribution, that's a two-point-one percent increase in the general fund budget. And as school budgets go, you can live at two-point-one if you've been consistently funded for a year or two. Our problem is, we're going to need a couple of years of back-to-back four to five percent increases to get us back on the proper footing. And that, you know, Bill, you identified it, you know, we're consistently a million to a million too short in terms of what we should be offering. And, you know, the needs-based budget was not extras and nice-to-haves, it was, what do we need just to be able to deliver the best we can for eighteen hundred kids? And that twenty-three million did represent in excess of eight percent. And I think, Erin, you said it, you know, you can't, you can't get that kind of an increase in one year. But at some point, and again, it's up to the towns to decide at what level we want to fund. And no one knows better than I, that as long as we're funding public education on the backs of property tax, it's not an equitable situation, which is what public education is supposed to be. It's just not. And until we get over that and get folks that really want, at the state and federal level, want to address the issues, the real fundamental structural problems within the state and at the federal level, we're just not going to get anywhere. And at least at the state level, at least we're having conversation. At the federal level, we can't even get conversation, and shame on everybody there. So, you know, and I think certainly at the local level, there will be, and there has been, and there will continue to be, very good dialogue around how we fund, how we finance our towns, at what level we want to have services delivered, not just educational services, but all services. And certainly, education takes up the lion's share, so it sometimes gets the most conversation and attention. But the bottom line is, looking at these numbers over time, at some point, we're going to have to have a couple of years of additional funding. Not saying it has to come from the towns, but I don't think I see it from the feds. And, you know, at the state level, there's going to be, I think, tweaks and adjustments, but as long as the health, the healthcare chunk of the state budget continues to rise the way it has in the last ten, twelve years, I don't see it happening there either. So there's a very real conversation that has not been happening around what public education should look like. And I will go on record as saying that it's not all about charter schools being the panacea. It's one component that deserves merit and discussion, but, you know, public education in this country is, got to be a conversation that everybody should be a part of. And I think that it's up to, you know, I'm getting old, and I pay my taxes very gladly to take care of the students that are coming in now in my town of Medway. Because there were people before that paid the freight for my kids to have a pretty darn good education and a great start in life. And so it's about community, it's about having polite and civil discussion about what is right for our communities and our educational community, and what's best for students. And I make all of my decisions based upon what's best for students. And hopefully, by doing that, that will be also the best decision for taxpayers, voters, residents, and any concerned citizen. And, you know, I will again make the offer, you know, I love to talk about school financing and funding, and if anyone that has concerns about how we have spent the money and where the money is, I would welcome the opportunity to take you through the budget, to take you through the accounts, to show you how we try and manage a school budget, which is no easy task in the ebb and the flow of a year. And, you know, I will go on record as saying that we have pretty well-run towns, we have a darn well-run school district, and we have dedicated public servants that serve these communities, and we have pretty talented folks who work very long hours for what's best for our kids. And so it's up to the communities and the voters to understand at what level they want to support education and all services. And I'll get off my soapbox now. That's FY sixteen, that's where we are. We're five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars short of a seven hundred and seven thousand dollar cut from a needs budget. And I think I've told all the boards, we can make anything work, we're good at that. But...
Don't say that anymore.
I'm not going to say it anymore. But at some point, you've got to say, we need help. And we're at that point where we need help.
Because I don't think we can make anything work. And I think the proof that we're not making things work is the sheer numbers of students who are leaving and making alternate
choices. And we're making, maybe making it work, but at a lot of expense to the kids.
Exactly.
There you go.
And that's very, very accurate.
And I think more importantly, and to climb up on my soapbox, I think there's another contributing factor, that the federal government and the state government seem to be focused on the urban areas, and that's their priority, and we're the, you know, I heard a statement, it was the most ridiculous statement I ever heard. It was like, we want to give the underprivileged the same educational opportunities as suburban kids. It's like, so you're assuming that all the individuals who reside in the urban areas are underprivileged? Because that's a ridiculous notion. They're giving free T-passes, they're subsidizing the MBT. Where's that tax money coming from? It's coming from us. And I look at it as, you know, Medway is within the top thousand schools ranked in the country right now. I think they're like at eight hundred and thirty-six or something like that. There, it's a phenomenal school system. But they made the sacrifice and bit the bullet and fought the fight, not only in their town meeting, but for their state rep who went out and fought for them, their state senator that went out and fought for them, and their federal representatives that went out and fought for them and got them the grants and got them the money. I feel as if, you're right, you're going to homeowners every town meeting and saying, look, twenty-five percent of my payment every month for my house goes to taxes, and a portion of that comes here to the school district, which I don't care, because I consider it to be an investment in my community. But I look at the stuff that's going on in terms of, you know, woe is me in Boston this and Boston that, and you're going to have the unmitigated gall to vote on the Olympics when it's going to represent jobs for people who live out here? And you're going to vote on it in the city of Boston? Because it's going to what? Tie up your T-lines that we subsidize and pay for? In the meantime, I'm sitting in a school committee meeting where I'm working at a one-point-two million dollar deficit, which is chump change to the T-riders in the city of Boston? And I look at it and I say, and I'm really disturbed by, you know, Representative Kuros isn't there, fat man, the election's over, so see you later. You know, and that's what we get. And, you know, it's, you know, and Charlie Baker, it's easy to say, cut, cut, cut. You know, as you live in Boston, and some of, and I looked, and when you look at the top schools in Massachusetts, where are they all from? With the exception of schools, certain schools, Sherborne, Medway, to name a few.
The W's.
Wellesley.
Wellesley.
Wellesley, right. But then where are you after that? You're in Boston. You're at, you're at Boston Latin, you're at, you're at some of the, you know, at some of the top Boston public schools that are incredibly well-funded. And, you know, the people in the communities that we live in, you know, and not to beat a dead horse, but they have to understand, if they don't want the bill to come every month from the tax collector's office, they have to be a little bit more open, put the nonsense aside, work together as a community. We really missed the gravy train, at least in our town, for solar. We had, we have a piece of land right there that's just like sitting with money going down the tubes, you can hear the coins dropping through the slot as they hit the abyss. Because for whatever reason, they didn't want to change something, and, you know, it's time to put that nonsense aside. It's time to look at the better of the, the good of the community as opposed to what Hatfield McCoy grudge you may have created ten years ago that you can't even remember what it is. I mean, it's time to look, we're getting killed here, and we're putting a burden on the taxpayers. And taxpayers, you know, ultimately, there are kids, and we're looking, but like you said, I'm looking for it just to be fair. I just want, I just want the state to care about, we're not the rich suburbanites out here, okay? Most people live in this town are working-class people that eke out a living and live check to check. You know, so this perception in the state house that's perpetuated in the media that somehow the suburban kids get this great phenomenal education, and I'm sitting here going, well, you know what, I'm looking at my budget here for our school, and our school's going down one-point-two. We're cutting into any kind of vocational training for our kids. Our kids are, you know, and rightfully so, going to other schools because it's not, our building, our high school building, you're right, it's, I wouldn't say, you know, it's an embarrassment, because, you know, it's a lot of pride in that building, but it's old, it's outdated, it needs to be fixed. And if you don't fix a window, you lose money in heat and cooling and all the other, and you're right. I mean, it was, it was like something that got pounded. I own a business. When I lose an employee, I have to retrain. I'm at a financial economic loss because I have to carry the new employee while they learn the job. There's a certain expense that, you know, you just don't, you know, it's not like plugging in a Lego, and you just, one Lego falls off, so you put another one in. It's a tedious, lengthy, and expensive process. And if you don't think it's important to properly fund the school system, go talk to Bellingham, when Bellingham almost lost their accreditation. Go talk to Uxbridge, and the guys who hold in the plywood signs that defeated the budget on how many years, when Uxbridge went from a top school system in the area to almost losing their accreditation. Find out what the cost is to bring yourself back up, and it's a lot more. You don't take care of a car, runs out of oil, sooner or later, you're not just going to go buy a couple more quarts of oil, you're going to have to rebuild the motor. So I don't know how else to put it. I mean, you know, but to your point, that's, well, I'll climb off my soapbox.
So, thank you, that was a lot of good information. We're going to have a three-year plan by July.
Yep, and a capital plan.
And now, on the top of your list will be scenarios for our negative six hundred
Five seventy-five.
Five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, because, all right, we don't have another meeting before our town meeting.
Leadership team and I will be working on that, and we'll have that emailed to the committee probably by early next week.
So I guess my question is, what does that look like? Because I think our townspeople need to know what that looks like. I think five seventy-five is a big number, but my concern is that, I mean, what does that look like? I know we're going to get the numbers, I just, we're cutting it really close in terms of communicating. Five seventy-five is big, and I just, I want to know what that looks like.
Well, as I mentioned, we have some FY fifteen money that we have not spent strategically, because our fear was the stuff that we need. Textbooks to replace the ones from nineteen-eighty. Chromebooks and wireless devices, increased technology infrastructure, professional development that we've already spent and want to continue with, instructional materials, those are all the things that we never can get to. Because whatever budget increases we get, get spent very quickly on the indiscretionary cost of, and the fixed costs of utilities, special ed, and contractual increases. So those things take up most of an increase. So we have on purpose not spent and held off on FY fifteen spending down, so the plan is to take what's allocated in the FY sixteen budget, the stuff that we never seemed to be able to get, and move that and purchase that with FY fifteen money. And we met this morning, we met this morning to look at what is available, and is it the way to do it? No.
No.
But is it one way to get us right here and now to close the gap? Yes.
Okay, but let me tell you my perception of that. As a person in the community, when I hear that, because you're not the first person I've heard that from, of, well, you know, we'll try to use what we did. I would like to know what impact, holding back on the money, what are we losing by doing that? Because the plain fact of matter is, people are like, well, you seem to find it somewhere every time.
That's what I hear.
You seem to find it, always you seem to have those deep pockets or those holes where you can find it. But something is lost in doing that. Something has to be lost.
Yes. However, would, would we rather run our own personal finances into the ground every year, hoping that we're going to find something?
No, oh, no, no, no.
Or would we rather pull aside and be planning to make sure that we have enough available to spend?
And I agree. I don't think it's wrong, I just think we need to make sure that families and community members clearly understand that while we're trying to freeze budgets, pinch pennies, however you want to describe that.
Be efficient.
Be efficient. Things are lost in that. Things that we had hoped to do that were originally budgeted for, that money was budgeted for something, is lost in this process. And so by doing this, by trying to, you know, pull up the bootstraps, and just like we all do in our homes, you know, tighten it up when the times are tough, we, there are things we can't do. And I think we need to start making the community aware of those things we're not able to do. Not only are we only losing from next year, we're losing from where we are right now.
Well, all you have to do is look at the commitment that the committee has made over the last several years on using E and D money. And that is money that we need to hold on to for our bond rating. When we have to go out and borrow, and guess what, we're going to have to do that at some point to upgrade our facilities. Well, guess what, if we have two percent in the E and D instead of five, that's going to be penalizing us. And so over the long run, those are the types of planning, pieces of the planning puzzle that we're going to have to find a way to do. I hear the same thing from a lot of different people. Geez, you always seem to find the money. Well, the reason why this year we're finding the money is because we purposefully made sure we were going to have some.
Yeah.
And that was the right thing to do. So to Wendy's point about, well, we got five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, what's it going to look like? Hopefully, two hundred, two hundred and fifty, I don't know what the exact number is going to be, will be available funds from FY fifteen that we're going to go out and buy those textbooks with, that we're going to make sure that we get the professional development, that we get the technology infrastructure in place for the long haul. And it's a very interlocking puzzle, but it at least shows, I think, everybody that we're working on the problem, so that, because school budgets are very fluid, and things change very quickly. You know, we didn't think we were going to have eighty thousand dollars' worth of clearing snow this year off of roofs. And the towns didn't think they were going to have to pay a fortune to maintain the roads that got shredded from the weather this year. So, you know, that's what we're going to work on, so that the committee has the scenarios. But the one thing that I don't want to do is press the, I can press the gotcha button and say, guess what, we're cutting music and athletics. Sorry. And so then if we don't do that, and use that merely as a scare tactic, then that's not restoring credibility.
But you know what, though, to Jane's point, because I think it's a good one, they're going to say the same thing because of what you just said. Well, look what we found, and, you know...
Find it. It's there.
But if it's there because you planned on this, then they're going to say, well, how much of this money that we're asking for this year have you planned for, so when we say no next year, you can roll it into that budget. And sometimes it may very well be necessary not to use it as a bluff, but to run it into the ground. Sometimes you've got to rip the Band-Aid off and say, okay, this is what you wanted. It's like, it's like when Blackstone turned down the dump truck, and I have to respond immediately to people who come up and say, well, you know, our streets aren't getting plowed or... And I, and I have to respond immediately to people who come up and say, well, you know, our streets aren't getting plowed or, or sanded. It's like, you turn down the dump truck. You turn up, we had seven diesel mechanics get up there and, and testify at the town meeting why we're, we're making a bad decision to buy these used trucks because our DPW said our trucks were broken, it couldn't work and they wouldn't be able to survive a large snowfall. Well, guess what? You're here now. You saved the money, right? The, whatever it was you saved. And, and now you're at that position. And, and now this is what the consequence was. So when you do that, they're gonna do exactly what Jane said they're gonna do because you allocate it, you thought ahead, which is good fiscal sense, you know, makes good fiscal sense, but they're gonna do what she said. I know, I hear it all the time.
I hear it every time.
Yeah, they, they, you, they think you have a secret Swiss bank account with.
I, 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 I agree. I think we gotta spend that money on what it was meant for and we have to rip the Band-Aid off. And if that means nine and ten professional staff, it means nine to ten professional.
And that's it.
We're gonna have to make sure whatever we went without this year is talked about.
Is talked about. That's the piece.
We may know part of it. We know there were some athletic uniforms that we decided to scatter, but they don't know.
Correct.
So we need to know and we need to let the public know that because of this five seventy-five, we didn't do baseball uniforms and, you know, there were a lot of things, a little things that do add up. But it's going to have to be talked about. We need a list.
But I think you can look at the bigger picture too with, with the children too. Children are, we have to send out for services. I mean, we need to support them in our schools so that we're not paying for the transportation to send them out. You know, my concern is we've had a lot of conversation about our infrastructure and technology. That's something that's necessary in order for the schools to be up to date and surviving. You know, our math program, we need to close the achievement gap. So that math program that's being piloted, that's gonna cost a lot of money. We need that program to close that achievement gap. Because what's gonna happen if we don't close that achievement gap? Those kids are going to be taking math classes in, in college that mean nothing.
That right.
So those things are the red flags that we need to be able to communicate. And if, if, if we can't do that, and yes, it's personnel, I understand it's personnel as well, but those are the things that we're pushing forward. You know, and, and we're not, we can't do that without the fonts. It's, it's.
And that's why I keep saying we need to specifically say program, but you know, we just can't, we, we need to tie dollars to programs. We need to tie dollars to the need that, you know, so this, this amount of money is this. So if we don't have this amount of money, we have no social emotional classroom. We don't have a part of the classroom. We have no classroom, you know.
And honestly, that is what our towns are screaming for. They want to know exactly where the money is being spent. So if you're tying it to the program, to the classroom, to the preschool setting, they will know where their money is going. And they, they want, they've been, they have been screaming for that for years.
But, but, but they've been screaming for it, but I'm looking out and my friend Dan Keefe is there. But, uh, you know, it's been empty all year. So if they wanna know, this is where you come. And I gotta tell you, we've been more transparent over the last two years than anything. But our packets are up there. You can look at them. Now, is it, is it, the layman, can you go through that? Maybe we need some mini lessons on, on, you know, video to kinda show them, to walk them through that. But, you, you know, I, I think we, we, we're on, we've been on this hamster wheel for a long time. And I think, you know, we've put more money out of E and D to reduce the gap, you know, to kinda make it less. I don't think these towns have felt a pinch o- over the last couple of years. I, I don't think they've felt it in the schools because we've, because we've done our job at kinda saving a couple pennies over here and it backfires on us. You know, when I leave Millville and, uh, they're talking about, uh, two dads are there and I'm overhearing them and I had to keep walking. I, you know, they were talking about, yeah, you know, the supply line on it was like, you know, a hundred thousand dollars. You, you can't, you can't tell me that's not a slush fund for everybody. I thought, I almost turned around and said, do you know how much teachers spend on their own? What other agency, what other corporation does that? You think pharmaceutical companies say you have to bring your own pens in or your own, no. They fly you to Florida to pick up a, a, a five pens and bring them back for your five people in, in your cubicle. You know what I mean? The, it's, it's, there's the understanding that, you know, and, or the coats that teachers bring in for, for kids. Or the backpacks that we get, the kids that don't have it. They, they think we're like, they think there's a slush fund somewhere and it's not. It's being efficient to plan, but see, our mindset has been we gotta plan because we know we're gonna, not gonna get what we need. And we need to change that mindset.
Yeah, well, you know what? If I can jump in here and, and, and I've been trying for a little while. And, and Superintendent Himmelberger is, is being more modest than he should be. Because what he has done since he came here is looked for efficiencies, looked for ways of saving money, looked for ways of, of spending money smarter. And that's why we're in the, I, I won't say good, but better position than we could have been. Um, and he's, you know, taught a lot of, the rest of us how to do that as well. So, you know, as far as slush fund go, I mean, and the problem is, you know, use the cars there and I'll use, I'll, I'll use the sailing. You can have a sailboat, big sailboat, and the problem is it's leaking underneath the water. And no one sees it's leaking underneath the water. It's gradually getting, but no one sees it. No one sees the ten and twelve-year-old textbooks are out of date. No one sees we finally have a literate, a literacy initiative that's in its third year that we need to spend money on. No one sees that we haven't built the special ed programs because it's a small portion of kids, but those kids are costing us a tremendous amount of money because we have not invested in the programs to make sure they're being taken care of in district. Okay, so, you know, and as far as people not understanding, people have to want to understand. And they have to make an effort to understand. It's a pretty big top out nowadays. Everyone can make a statement, look at one line, uh, the information is there, the information is out there. You know, Mr. Himmelberger has made the offer to explain to anybody, how many people, two, three have come in?
One.
One. Okay, so that's a, that's a case, right, that's a case in point. You know, and, and the, the, the part that scares me is that those efficiencies that we found this year that have caused us to be in a better position are already built into next year's budget. So they're not there going forward. Okay? So, you know, get by, get by, get by. Well, eventually you're not really getting by. You're just not seeing it and it's not hurting yet. And when it does start to hurt, ripping off the Band-Aid, the ship sinks. And there's certain things that we cannot afford not to do. Okay, we cannot afford not to have a social emotional program. You can't because it's gonna cost you three times more. Okay, you cannot afford not to have a literacy program, not to have a math series at the elementary schools that's being used and used with, with, you know, consistency. And we need, we need to put those things in. So, you know, it's gonna have to be, it's gonna need to be a smart, look at a whole bunch of different things. Everything from staffing to things, you know, equipment needs. People don't, people don't understand that education, the cost has gone up and the funding has not. There's no way you can meet the need, needs of education on less than, than two percent a year. And that has not been the case.
So what you're saying is, um, Mr. Himmelberger is doing a fantastic job for what we brought him in to do. Which was financial advisement. And we knew he was the, the money guy and he's already saved us that money. But I think what we're gonna have to do right now is make a really big display of everything you've saved. Just so everyone feels better on where that money came from.
Multicolored.
Because, and, and it's not going to be there next year because he's built it into what we're doing. Are there any other questions or?
So when, so you're gonna get us that scenario, then it's really up to us to look at the scenario and say what our priorities are and what we're not gonna budge on and what we are gonna budge on.
And I think we've, we've already been pretty clear on what we. Meetings to ask for. Are we gonna have a?
I think we need to have a workshop to kinda hammer this out for us.
Before we go to the town.
I do think the towns, I, I whispered to Jane earlier, I'm not sure parents know, know the, the, what five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is gonna cut. You know, last year they, they did because we had, we were, we were out doing a grassroots campaign early on because we weren't gonna accept zero.
We were passing out pamphlets.
And I'm not, and I don't really wanna go through that, but I do think that we, I do think that, um, parents need to know that it's, it, this is gonna, this is gonna sting a little.
Well, it's how does it affect me? So you can see the five hundred and seventy-five, but how does that affect if I, if I, my child in, in, I mean, really, that's what it is. Because if you can put a personal, something personal to that, it's eye opening. You know, if my, if my two kindergartners going into the Blackstone School Systems have twenty-seven kids in their classroom, that's gonna affect my two boys. You know, so that needs a personal, it, it needs something personal. That five seventy-five needs something personal.
So are you feeling like we need a workshop, um, next Thursday before our regional agreement?
I think we need something before we go to Millville so we can explain, hey, this is what, we appreciate you coming up with this, but this is what.
This is what it's going to look like.
Yeah, and, and, and I remember from last year, they wanna know what it means to that building. They don't wanna know what it means to the district, what it means to that building. And, and we, we need to let them know. And we, so, and I don't really know. I know, I have things in my head that I'm not gonna be popular about, but we haven't done that yet. And I think we need to do that exercise.
Do you think you could have it to us by Tuesday? So we have time to look at it and then can everyone do Thursday at six? Is that enough time?
I can't do Thursday at six. I can do Thursday at six thirty. I can't do, six is a really bad, I still have, I'm open forever, so I. The office never closes.
We just scheduled the regional agreement meeting for Thursday at seven.
Can I just throw a point out there? Cause I, I really, cause I'm gonna have to think about this very carefully. And I'm, to the Millville representatives. The other problem you have is when you go to Millville and they are concerned, Bill, and you said it with that one building, they don't care about. The people in Blackstone feel that. And they're looking to Millville first because they're like, if they're not paying neither a week, because we're paying seventy percent and they're paying thirty. And that's why things like, and, and how do you approach Millville and say, you know, things like the bond rating? The reason we're double A below what Blackstone's is because of the way you're handling your fiscal house here. And the way you're, it's just the reality of it. It's not the way you handle, it's just the reality of it. This is why we have to pay more money as a region, regional school district. But I, see, like I said before, because I don't wanna step back from that, Jane, we're in this together. So they can't, so they have to understand if they're gonna say, we're, we're concerned about, you know, Millville Elementary School, well, you know what? Stop because, but how do you approach that without creating that, you know?
Well, part, but part of it is those kids are going to go to a middle school.
Right. And I don't, I, 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 I don't know. I haven't lived in Millville long enough to, to feel that sentiment. But I, you know, the parents that I know that live in the community of Millville are concerned about the school system, not just that elementary school. There are some that will defend the Millville Elementary School until, you know, they chain themselves to the door or whatever. But I, I, I think if you clearly make parents understand what's at stake educationally for their children across the district, across. I mean, there are a lot of Millville kids in the high school and in the, the middle school and in all the school system. But it has to be personal. It has to be personal. What's in it for me, not just in the Millville school, but what's in it for me if my child is going into, you know, what's my experience like now? Because I will tell you, as a parent with a child, not as a school committee member, as a parent with a child in the school system, my experience is not a hundred percent positive right now. It's not a positive one. I think there are educational pieces that my child is missing. And so there is value in that to me. But if I'm a parent in the community and there are not things, and I think they're getting a grand education and life is hunky-dory, we as a school committee have a responsibility to show them how it could be better. How it could be better, you know, that, that, you know, maybe that there are some pieces, um, like a math program that might, because to your point earlier, and I didn't wanna bring it up, but this is what I do for a living. Eighty percent of college students take, require a remedial class, at least one.
Either, either in math, English or science.
Eighty percent.
I, I know that, yeah. And, and when you're paying forty, forty-five thousand dollars a year for your education.
At least once.
Might as well just go to community college for a year, take remedial classes and then go to four-year college.
But I think we're looking at that through the regional agreement too. And how do you bring equity between all the children in the district? And, you know, the, the, the idea of, you know, that building in Millville, i- if we were to take that out of the equation and you had kids from both towns going, working together, all schools in our system, that would kinda take away from that Millville-Blackstone. You know, I think, I think, you know, looking at that information is, is the positive way to look at that.
But don't, don't forget that was already tried once and it, and it went down to resounding defeat.
More than once, but yeah.
Yeah, but it went down to, the time I remember, it went down to pretty hostile defeat. I mean, people, the, the thing you have to remember is that my, and I don't know why it happens. And I don't know why a lot of things happen in this world. And I don't know why people stand out there and intentionally sabotage things with no greater good in mind. I don't know why their goal isn't to build, it's to destroy. And, and, and they don't care what happened. They just like walking away saying, I won. And, and damn the consequences. That's why when you're saying, you know, you don't wanna run it into the ground, I'm thinking, you know what? Sometimes the naysayers, the people that make the legitimate decisions, they need to look at those people and say, what did you just tell us to do? What did you just do to us? You know, when you push that, you know, when you, when you told us the sailboat was safe and you were, you were looking at, up at us from down below and say, don't worry, don't listen to him, don't listen to him because the boat's listening one way or another. Don't listen to him. He doesn't know what he's talking about. And next thing you know, we're sinking. I, I think, but you know, people stood outside, people stand outside of these town meetings and they, they pass off misinformation. So nothing is stronger, nothing's more important than to get the word out, get the facts out. Don't assume people just know because they don't. They work, they have busy lives, they work, they take care of their kids, their houses, their, their other interests, you know? And it's, it's, it's just getting the message out there and making it as simple and as clear as possible because you want people to understa, we, we live in a society of instantaneous messaging. You know, we know what's happening when, you know, when a mother smacks their kid in Baltimore. We know instantaneously and it's broadcast over the, the web and, and everything else, you know? I mean, it's just an amazing system that we have now and, and people listen, they look for, you know, they don't remember even what happened six months ago. You know, they, they remember what happened, you know, six minutes ago, six, you know, six hours ago. So I think, I think that you're right, Jane. I think that, you know, you have to, you have to somehow bridge that gap and address it, you know, without.
See the picture.
So if Thursday doesn't work, I don't, I don't know if we could try to push Wednesday. It doesn't really give us enough time to review, right?
Well.
What about Friday?
I can, um, see if I can get it to you Monday afternoon.
Can we go, how long you think the regional meeting will take?
Um, well, this one's the first one where we split up our subgroups, social media, building, staffing, transportation budget. So I think this one's gonna take, it, it might take some time.
I'll try and get to you Monday afternoon. So that gives you a little more flexibility.
If we're looking at Wednesday or are we looking at Wednesday?
Do you guys, does anyone prefer Wednesday over Friday?
A lot of towns, Wednesday for the rest of the week. Wednesday to Saturday.
And this is just a workshop though, so we don't have to have a quorum that.
If I had my preference, Friday would probably be that. Because that's the end of the week and it's a little bit.
It's the mother-son bowling at the.
If Wednesday or Friday, I'm, I'm good with either of those dates. Thursday's just a bad one because I have a lot of appointments Thursday night.
Jane, does one work better for you than?
Well, Wednesday or Thursday, that either Friday doesn't ever.
Okay. So Wednesday, seven o'clock or do we want earlier?
Seven's great.
Seven?
Seven.
So the sixth is, the sixth at seven?
The sixth at seven?
Okay, we'll post.
That's for a workshop.
And it's just, there's just one thing on the agenda?
It's a workshop for five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the last thing under reporter superintendent is the, was that the sick bank request?
I'm sorry. Oh, the five fourteen meeting was the only that I was asked to, um, to speak at the NHS inductions, which is, is the fourteenth at seven. Dr. Thompson certainly can, can.
Deliver your.
Fill my role or doesn't matter, whatever the committee wishes.
We're usually invited to the induction, but I think that would be okay. I don't know how anyone else feels about not attending the, uh, it's going to be, I think, a pretty important meeting because it's after the Millville Town Meeting. And, um, I, I think, I think we should keep it as is and unless someone else wants to, um, speak up and definitely say that they're not going to. and definitely say that they're not going to be here on the fourteenth. Okay, so we'll leave it as is.
It's just Steve.
Steve said he would like, his son is in the National Arts Society, but if everyone else is here, we still have our quorum and. Wednesday, the thirteenth?
It's not till. I'm okay with moving it, I think we will be having more budget discussions and I think it'd be important to have as many people, but if that takes more people out of it, then it was either way.
For me, as we get to the end of the month, it's absolutely crazy for me for graduation at, at my school, so that, like, I might not even be able to be, be done the twenty-eighth, so, um, and that's right after the, uh, the Blackstone meeting, which I, I love being here for that meeting. Um, so, uh, whatever dates you want to set, just give it, try to give it to me early, uh, and I'll, I'll do my best.
Do you want to do the thirteenth? Can we do the thirteenth?
The thirteenth instead of the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Seven o'clock?
Then you, Tara?
I can do it.
John?
For the, I mean, instead of, uh, the fourteenth of May, do it the thirteenth?
Yeah.
And this is a regular meeting, the one we just scheduled for the sixth is a workshop.
Yeah, workshop, okay, yeah, the thirteenth is good, I can make that one.
So we'll move that to.
Does that work for both of you?
May thirteenth?
I have a dentist appointment, but I'll be here right afterwards, so.
I'm numbed up, we don't want you here numbed up.
No, just talk funny, it'll be. Right, yeah, that's all right, it won't be anything unusual.
All right, and moving on, report of the assistant superintendent curriculum update.
Here we go, well, I'll, I'll start with the, um, not-so-good news. Uh, Monday night, um, I got notification from the Department of ED that Edwin Teaching and Learning, which if you remember is the platform that we decided to use, that was supported by the state, um, offered by the state for free statewide to do our curriculum mapping in, uh, was going to be shutting down as of, uh, a couple hours ago, as of four hours ago.
Forever?
Um, yeah, we, so we, yes, yeah, the vendor has, has dropped it, so, um, yeah, I total, I, I fell out of my chair, uh, instantaneously emailed, uh, to even make it more fun, uh, when you use the curriculum mapping software, it basically is written in as a webpage, the only way to actually get it out is as like a PDF file, which is not necessarily reusable or reloadable. So the staff has been running around kind of scrambling, trying to download the work they've spent the last six months doing, um, and trying to save it, um, and we are going to have to, um, restart the process.
Oh, that's a bummer.
Yeah, it's, it's actually kind of unbelievable, Think Gate, who owns Edwin, also owns Edwin Analytics, which is the software that, uh, helps us analyze the MCAS data. So no one would have thought that, you know, this established company that has a relationship with, with the state of Massachusetts would all of a sudden go away. There's no real reason given, I could probably guess as to why. You know, it, it was a decent platform at a decent price. I am in the process right now of looking at the other two major, um, curriculum mapping platforms out there, Atlas Rubicon and Curriculum Trax. Uh, I have an appointment set up with Atlas Rubicon, I'm trying to contact Curriculum Trax to take a look, but the problem is we're probably gonna have to readjust our, um, timeline because, uh, being finished by June slash October is really not an option at this point. The good news is, is that the conversations have occurred as to who's teaching what when, it's the putting it in part that needs to be done over again, so it's not starting completely at zero, but we definitely have lost, um, half of our momentum, so, um, I've been, you know, walking around telling people I'm so, I mean, just, everybody is speechless.
You have to save the data though, you printed everything out and.
Well, yeah, it isn't really data, it's just printouts of what you did. So you either have to cut and paste or retype it all into something else, so it's, um, and, you know, we're kind of in the process of trying to figure out how much in cost that cost is, because that's, you know, bringing in subs, having people do half-days, a lot of training, a lot of after-school time at faculty meetings, that now we're gonna have to redo that to relearn a new system. So, um, you know, we, we send people out for state training on how to use the system and, you know, we have six or, we have three people in each building that are trained in this to help other teachers, well, now we're gonna have to go do that all again. Granted, the training was free, but you still have to hire a sub and bring them in to do that, time away from kids. So to say we're less than happy about that would be the understatement. But that's, that's kind of where we are, that, I mean, the good news is the conversations, people do have, and I did, a, a lot of the work was done in Word documents before they started typing it in, so a lot of people already had pieces that, that they could use and go back to. But still, the, the put, we're gonna have to put it into a new system, we're gonna have to find a new system, purchase a new system, which we did not have to do this year because, um, it was offered for free. Again, one of those cost savings. And then next year we're going to, and next year was supposed to either be fairly inexpensive, about five dollars per kid. I'm not quite sure the prices of these two products, they might be slightly more. So the fun never ends. Onto the good news, uh, the passion, our district-wide professional development committee met earlier this week, uh, talking about and planning for our three professional days, which once again are the Friday before Columbus Day, the Friday before Martin Luther King Day weekend, and March eleventh or twelfth, that Friday. Those correspond with the Blackstone Valley Curriculum Consortium Professional Days so that we can share resources and our nurses could go meet with other nurses from other districts, uh, saving money. But we're working with, uh, with district volunteers, the district, district committee to look at how we're going to, uh, and what we're going to offer, who's going to be doing it. Keeping in mind our, uh, district initiatives of, um, the curriculum mapping, using understanding by design, co-teaching, uh, Google apps, um, as well as getting technology pieces in there, especially in and around the smart boards. Google, we, uh, the Google leaders have asked for another training day, so they are, we're gonna be volunteering the last week in August, our trainer is coming in, and looking specifically at certain things that they've tried out, that they want more training in, and also kind of focusing on, you know, getting some half-day train, PD up and running for, uh, for our PD days. The math pilot is, uh, is off to a great start, I'm really impressed with the teachers and their efforts in both areas. The good and bad news is that there are two strong programs and they like both of them, so I think it might be a very interesting conversation, they like this and this and that and that, so I, I told them that I was not gonna waste their time and have them try out bad things, because they did believe me at first, but I think maybe they do, um, but we are.
They like them? They like them?
They like them, they, well, they like, they like, you know, they, they like them both, they like this piece over here and this one a little bit better, and I like this one, so it's, you know, um, so it should be an interesting conversation. We've got about five weeks left, and then we're gonna sit down, uh, they have a rubric to fill out, and then we will have, uh, we'll have meetings to talk about it. Next week, Pearson is setting, sending in, uh, one of the representatives to do a question and answer in-house day. Uh, she'll be in, uh, Blackstone tomorrow, uh, and then on Tuesday, she's gonna be in Millville for the day. Set up, teachers can drop in, bring their books, what does this mean, how do I do this? And, and get some, uh, questions answered and one-on-one PD if, if they so need it. So that's the curriculum update.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Any questions or comments? And school committee forum?
Do you want to do another public forum?
Sure, we can add a public forum, did you want to join us? Yes, please do. Tell us your name and.
I'm Dan Keefe and I'm sitting here tonight as Dan Keefe and that's it, nothing with the selectmen. So I've been watching your meetings all along, I've met with the superintendent and, um, trying to get my head around how things go, and it's quite a, quite a budget process and, and, um, it, it's, it's the first, I, I, I'll start with, my father was employed by the town of Blacks, the, the school system in nineteen sixty-five. I was the first person in my family, born in Blackstone and has never left. But I've grown up listening to these school committee meetings or hearing about them as a child. So the battle you are fighting right now is nothing new. You know, it's nothing, nothing that hasn't been happening, it's for the last, at least forty-four years that I've been on this planet. I, and, and you're right, you hear the same things, you have all this money at the end of the year, or you come up with this money when you need it. But for the first time, I've ever heard a superintendent offer to sit down with anyone. You know, I, I, transparency, accountability, those words get thrown around all over the place for catchphrases more than anything else. It's right there, right in front of us. You know, two people have called you on it.
You did take me up on it.
Two people have called you, called you, and it's boring stuff, when, if you want to sit down, you know what I mean, for most people? But you can get an understanding and, and, I mean, there's a tough way to hide something when you're sitting there showing people number by number where this goes. It's important that, that maybe that two-fifty that you may find, not find, that you have a side to offset what you may not get, is also has an effect going down the road because it's not being spent on your plans to move forward. And, 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 and it's gonna affect us for a lo, it's, you know, for a long time, we'll never catch up at that rate. You'll never get to where we need to be. So, i- if, if you had that one point five percent increase over the last ten years like the chart showed, you'd be asking for fifty thousand dollars in additional money this year. I know times were tough for everybody over the last ten years. How can you make a three-year plan or a five-year plan if you don't know, have some idea of what's coming, you know, what's coming in? You know, the, the two-hundred-and-fifty safe for, for the number you gave, that's, that, that's good, but that's gonna set you back, you're gonna need more the following year, if you want to reach your goals. Uh, the, the, the town of Millville, as growing up as a child, what I heard in my household is, has always been there. When the school needed, even when they had to do without and other things in town. And this is growing up, you know, my father retired in, in around two thousand, so, so I didn't get the input for the last ten or fifteen years, but they've always gone and done without to support the schools. And it's funny, because now as a selectman, and I'm not speaking as a selectman right now, but I, I, I watched the other meetings and I did read the mission statement of the town of Millville Selectment, and it says to support, to support the school systems, as, you know, which, and the best they can, so. I am here, uh, to continue my education on the school budget and what, 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 as a community, we need. It was beautiful to see the Blackstone and Millville Finance Committee sitting down together the other night. That's a start, it's gotta start somewhere. And, and, and I hope we can move that forward with other boards, to sit down and get an understanding of, of, um, of what you need and what we need as a community to move together in the future. Otherwise, we're just gonna go through the same battles at every town meeting every year and not get anywhere. And to save you, and I'll end with, to save you any trouble that your phone calls you may get tomorrow, that is a permanent school roof. You don't get any, you don't get any calls tomorrow saying, saying it's, um, it, it is, it was, because they're gonna say one point eight million dollars and it's only temporary, that was the final product on that building, but there was talk.
You're gonna guarantee it for fifty years, Dan?
I am not guaranteed, I, I happen to be the one to put the temporary one on, but that, that is, yes.
There was a temporary one on.
There was, there was a temporary right before that, just, and that's when.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all right.
I was, that's when I was, that's when I was involved, but thank you for that, because I'm sitting there going, I've been wrong before, I've been wrong a lot, and I'm willing to admit it, but I could have sworn we voted for a temporary roof.
Yeah, and it was.
So the first one was temporary.
And it was supposed to be for one year, that lasted for two and a half years.
Right, and now this is the permanent.
Now this is the permanent, so just so you, just so you don't get phone calls and, and, um.
Just send it to my email.
Yeah. And, and, and I was out of town when I, I was reviewing some of the meetings, and, and there was certain committees that you guys were looking for from people from the public.
Yes.
And is there anything open on the building?
Anything, you can be on.
Oh, it's still open, because I thought you were closing it.
We did close it, but the meeting is Thursday, so if you give me your email, I'll just add you to the list.
Sure.
And you can be on building, transportation, staffing, social media.
He wants buildings.
He wants buildings.
I'm, I'm familiar with most of these buildings pretty good, so I, I, that would be good for, you know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great, be great.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
All right, so we will move on to school committee forum, we can start with Bill.
I, I moved over here, so I thought you were starting over there. I, I too want to thank, even though I don't like the, I don't like the result, I do want to thank the two finance committees taking the initiative to meet. You know, it's gonna be a, a tough couple of weeks in terms of looking at, uh, what we're gonna cut and so forth, so, uh, I want people to, uh, know that they can, um, look at every one of our agendas, our packets are online, you can call, um, any one of us, uh, you can email John, um, but you can call any one of us, you know, the, the assistant superintendent, superintendent, uh, to fill up any gaps before the town meeting. We'll all be at both town meetings, um, now that we can, you know, with the, the FinCom and Blackstone moving to next week. So I just hope to see people there and, and to come out and to take the initiative and, uh, find out, uh, the information, because we'll be, we'll be shouting it from the rooftops. That's it.
Nothing to add.
John?
No, I, I've spoken and misspoken enough tonight, so I'm all set.
Tara? Um, I just want to thank Bill for spending yesterday at the, uh, at the day on the hill. I'm glad you enjoyed lunch, but it, it seems like a lot of good, a lot of good information, so thank you for that. I do want to remind everyone that our town meeting is before our next meeting, so, um, May eleventh is Millville. And I would like to request, I, I don't know that we're gonna need it in the magnitude, we had it last year, but we did offer childcare at both town meetings, and I just think it's important because we had it last year. I think the consistency of it, um, you know, with maybe the National Arts Society or Student Council, and if we could just make sure that's in place, there may be people that never came until last year and are expecting it, so.
That's a great point.
And that is all I have. So we are, um, actually going to move into executive session for discussion of non-union contracts, we have to take a roll call vote, and we will only be coming back to.
No.
Let's not come back, we'll, we'll just.
To adjourn, right?
No, we don't have to go back to adjourn.
We don't have to adjourn.
Roll adjourn now.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call for executive session?
Yes.
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 Sure.
Yes.
And yes, so.
Just so I know the pattern, am I always after Jane?
No, because sometimes Georgette and, um.
Steve?
We'll be here.
Okay.
And I don't know where they're gonna sit, I don't know.
Well, there's a chair here and there's a chair.
Although that's, uh.
We have to, we have to, there's a chair over there.
I took a lot of space tonight.
We moving into the other room? We're gonna stay here, we're gonna move to the other room? I don't mind.
Why don't we move into the other room?
Oh, we do?
Well, that way Jesse can pack up.
Jesse can pack everything up.
Yep, that's a good idea.
We're gonna freak somebody out.
Well, it's all right, because, you know, she's gonna have somebody go to therapy when she's older, I mean, you might.
Already going now.
Sorry.
What?
What if she goes?
No, she's good, she's good.
It's adjourned the meeting. What'd she say? I thought we did that, we did a roll call, we weren't gonna return, but then we have to.
All right, the meeting is adjourned.
You have to bang it, it's the only time you get to bang it.
Okay, hold on.